They're taking motion to approve months to the June 25 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Not all of them favor say aye. Look at the 29th meeting. Nothing left until the end of the month, so.
I'd move to approve.
No, I was saying. Is there any further discussion? Not all of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Upset.
Jude and Kathy are here. Did you guys have anything further for us, or are you here for questions, or?
I'm here just if you had questions. I wasn't here last Monday, so I know if you ask me questions for me.
I was just wondering maybe if you have a timeframe in order to make any type of decision. The reason why I'm asking is that we know our boiler probably needs, something needs to be done. And we're going to have to make.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at to get that done by the time we approve it?
I don't, I, I, I don't know. I'll have to call Mr. Malacote. I don't know what the timeframe is. I just know we kind of did a kind of an experimental thing that happened to work that sealed some issues that we had inside the boiler, but we're just very concerned about this.
It has to be done before winter. If you're going to do it.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's what we're thinking.
Can installation be done during school time?
I believe so. I mean, they can work through school. I, I.
I think I.
I mean, the perfect time would be summer, but.
Years ago, I was involved in replacing one of them. I think they did it during the school. Everything went in and out of the gym door.
We, there, we did that. The high school had a, so during the school.
I have a board meeting tonight, so I'm the first one to get the month. Just kind of wondering what a timeframe would look like to report back to the board.
I did ask the county clerk to provide data on the evaluation for outlying areas of this district. I am still really concerned about providing money for people that are paying taxes to those school districts that are outside of the county. That, I am wrestling with that. I would also say that I would have a little trouble voting for something built in Russell County. Being the storm shelter. That would, that would kind of, I think, I think that'd be stretching. Even though it's going to protect some Lincoln Counties, the benefit would be for Russell County and the city of Williams. In answer to Kathy's storm shelter, I don't, I think a community storm shelter would be better. I absolutely think that is ridiculous to build something and deny the public shelter. I don't know why FEMA's regulations are that way, but that, to me, I think that's, we're building a structure in the county to protect people, but we're going to, who we're going to protect. And of course, in the summertime, it'll protect no one, and that's one of our worst times of the year. So that's, that I think would interest into my decision whether to, to fund your capital outlay there. On the other hand, I would say that no learning can take place if the environment is poor. And I think the heating and air conditioning are issues that need to be addressed. I guess I would be open to helping with those areas.
I guess for me, I don't know who's going to be responsible if we have a community shelter out there. We're open to it every time there's a storm, the school is not in session. I think that, you know, FEMA is going to pay the vast majority of them. Which, I, I understand what Mr. Wallace said about building out of county, but I think for me, it would depend on whether it's a grant match or whether we're building the whole thing.
Are you talking for both of us?
Either, either one, yeah. You know, a grant match, I could do that pretty easily.
So what I'm hearing is the other things, though, would be talking about boilers?
Yeah, I don't know. Storm shelters, I think for me, each, either place.
That's the issue.
I believe, you know, I, I understand the needs of the storm shelters. I just don't necessarily agree with what Mr. Wallace said about us footing the bill for a community one, or FEMA would put the bill for one to the school. And I doubt if there's a storm and someone shows up there, I don't think you have the security people to keep them out.
Checking their ID to make sure they're either a staff.
So I think in, you know, yeah, it's not a community center, but you're not going to turn somebody away at the door.
We went and visited Kinsley, and theirs is a community shelter that is attached to the high school. And they talked, we'll, in order to allow, to get it open, you work with, you know, your fire department, you work with your police. That, that's who the, when they would have a key to it, they would be the ones that would have that information to get that early, ability to have that unlocked. So we would probably follow something similar to what their problem was, and it works very well.
What's the current procedure at the elementary school in Lucas?
At Lucas, we just, as far as storm, we use the inner rooms.
Just the classrooms?
Well, basically, our restrooms. If there's no windows, it's the inside rooms. It's, I mean, we have four, four rooms that we go to.
Is there any place in there that you can change into a safe room?
No, we look at that.
Terry.
And we're still, I'm sorry, we're still pursuing the, we're still pursuing the grants.
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah.
You've both already applied for the FEMA grant to see where that goes. And Terry, you were saying about a match funding. I guess it's my understanding that if you had liquid capital available, that you would be using that to do some of the current updates that are needed, like the boiler system before the weather changes, et cetera. So are we to understand that what, what is set aside in the capital outlay is pretty much already earmarked for regular repairs? And that doesn't include these kinds of changeovers where you're going to change out the air conditioning systems and the boiler systems?
Our capital outlay, we believe about $370,000 a year. Our, our monthly bills related to capital outlay, we earmark about $22,000. So you use, you put pencil to paper, that leftover money this year, we did half the high school roof, and then the other half, we did a lease purchase. So that lease purchase money is also going to come out to capital, come out of capital outlay. We always have things that happen. I don't, I mean, it's just, you have buildings like that, there's always things that break down. There's always things that need to be repaired. And to $370,000 is, is a lot of money when you're talking about trying to invest. And we went ahead, the board went ahead and approved Travis Short's bigger, his, his company's going to retrofit the elementary. We're paying for that out of capital outlay. We're trying to do as much as we can. We just don't have a million dollars to do the HVAC. To put a new boiler in that building, you know, we did Mr. Malacote and did this study, it's not feasible.
Well, it's not something you can necessarily do stage by stage. It's out of a one, one slot field.
And if we do the HVAC, we have to do the windows because our windows, I mean, they're, they're being.
Boy, your greatest heat loss in any structure is the windows.
Correct.
I mean, in my years in the construction business, it's the only thing you could do to your house that would actually overpay your time favor itself. That's it. Anything else you did to it would never pay for itself. But the windows will, if you've got the old leak of windows. Because with, what energy costs have done through the years, you know, is windows have come down, the energy costs have gone up, so.
And Jude probably can attest to this. The air quality in the buildings, I, I think Mr. Wallace said, when kids get sick in our building, the sickness sticks around for four to six weeks because our air quality calibration, you know, clean air intake is basically ill. So we feel like this will help the learning department. And we do a great job keeping the building as clean as we can.
I think if you build a new building, there's codes as to the amount of air that has to be moved in and out of the building.
And that's what Mr. Cap Malacote has, has engineered into this new HVAC system.
I know at the hospital, it's tremendous.
I mean, that's the.
It flushes like every 20 minutes.
For us, that's the part of the HVAC.
Is there, have any other school districts approached county governments to fund? You know, are you aware of that? To fund schools?
I think I am.
Yeah.
Nothing I'm aware of. I think.
Didn't some of the districts out west benefit greatly from the wind farms?
I called.
Scareville?
Yeah.
I think they do.
I called Eldemis, and he said that, he didn't give me any names, and I can get those names for you, but Western Community, Western Kansas Communities.
I think they kind of went.
That's how they, that's basically what their capital outlay is.
I think Scareville was one of the first, I remember when the wind farm went in, I know they, their school was getting X amount of dollars.
Yeah.
Now I don't know how much.
The, I guess yesterday put this cost of this project in a little perspective. Someone is worth $150 million to play basketball.
Yeah.
And we're willing to fund something like that. We're unable to fund a million and a half to have air quality for our students, our young people whose health and future is dependent on it.
It's kind of screwy, the whole day.
Yes, yes, it is. It is. It kind of puts things in perspective. To me, a million and a half dollars is a lot of money. But when I look at it at $150 million for somebody to play basketball, it makes it look a little small.
I didn't get a vote on that.
Or how many stadiums have we helped build with federal money?
Well, I didn't, I didn't get a vote on that contract. I would have, I would vote on all of those.
Well, I think there's several million going into KU football stadium renovation, isn't there? And I mean, that's all been raised private, but we cannot, people will not pay taxes to, to improve the buildings. That's, it's a sad commentary on our society.
Or reduce education so that they can afford it.
I have a question for Dawn. It's been brought to my attention that some of the wind towers south of Sylvan are in the Wilson's water stretch.
Not in Lincoln County, I don't think.
I think they are.
Probably that post rock.
But is that part of, I guess.
You don't go to the, you don't go all the way to the county line to the south?
No. Okay, so my question is, or the contract that was just renewed was with the Smokey Hill. But the post rock one, when is that up?
Uh, not for another.
Four years.
Uh, I think so, like, you know, once I get home. Post rock is up in 2021. That will be the last year of the recent disrepair.
And you're saying the towers that are currently contracted, where we're giving a percentage to the schools out of this contract, that's just in Smokey Hill? That's not?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I wasn't sure about how that worked.
So, yes, when post rock hopefully will come to purchase, they're not continuing pilot, I think, after 2022, then depending on what they have said. And one thing to remember is Smokey Hill mandated the 35% to go to two inches for the second.
Well, it's also under new ownership than it was with the prior contract, correct?
It's that several.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I think, three times in the 10 years.
But current agreement is, is if they improve their, they would start replacing turbines, and they would go back to the original pilot, kind of, too. But as far as they know, they're not doing that.
They had several, have several their own operating.
So we, so it's built in that there's a 35% of the total that is to the school districts? And then we determined, or somebody determined that whichever towers were in whichever school district, that's the dollar amount that was divided.
The wind tower company said he will give 35% to the school, and it was up to us to decide how to disperse it. Without me doing it, is the fairest way to.
Have we given that first payment? Because this is the first year, right?
We received, last year for phase one was the first payment, 52. This year will be phase one and phase two.
There aren't any phase one towers in 291.
Right. Okay. So my question then to the school boards would be, what did you guys decide to budget for with that additional money?
I think they're going to be going tonight, I'll be able to tell you.
Okay.
I can, I can let you know tomorrow, I can give you that. But the board decides to do that, but it's one of the projects that, I believe it's one of the projects we presented to you, that I think they're going to go ahead and.
Meaning?
It's one of the three projects that we, in your presentation.
Oh, to put it toward?
Yes.
The capital improvement project?
Yes.
My figures are.
D299 won't receive any improvement until just.
This year?
Maybe even January, just depending on when we get.
Win that money.
But then they'll get a year longer than, depending on what they do after 20 years.
I guess my rough calculation is that we basically to take care of environment issues in 299, it would be about $760,000. So I, that's kind of what I added up.
Yes.
And 298, right at $920,000 is where you're at. Which.
That's the HVAC at Hellas.
Are the FEMA grants yearly?
That's without the storm shelters at each grant.
Are the FEMA grants yearly, Amanda, they?
I don't think so. Jacob Bray contacted me again this next week, this last week. And they're only when they have money. They kind of let you know when they have money. And, and they have money this year. And we reached out to them, and they said, last year, and they said, no, we don't have any money. He checked back with us, and then they got back to us.
But you can continue to apply, I guess, is what I'm.
Yeah, we will.
But, I mean, if you get turned down, you've got to reapply.
Correct, yes. And see, we have, we've already applied with Dave Hansen, and we have already applied with, through Mitchell County, through that partnership. We applied for a grant along with the city before I got here, and it was.
Dawn, what'd you say the balance in that wind tower is now? Would be the principal?
The sponge, the use, they used up, does anyone want to call it later?
There actually is a couple of them.
Okay.
We gave them two presentations, one for the FEMA rate, that we always submitted.
Jude?
Yes.
Have you already received bids on these?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is where there's 20.
Where are they from?
The last one, the one we accepted, some last one, nobody else pays.
On the boil, like the boiler system?
Yes.
There's 5,000, or, sorry, $5,662,342.93. $5,672,320. And I think we're almost done with the rest of the projects.
I was going to say, how much of that have we paid from the 400 and whatever it ended up being, 70 or 70?
We, we, we're passing a $231,000, $1,400,000 to the.
I guess I could support today $760,000 to 299 and $925,000 to 298. I could support that, and I would move that. Wind tower web money that we authorized, $760,000 to 299 and $925,000 to 298, to improve the air quality and environment for students.
I will second. I will second to move into discussion.
I wrote down that you said $760 and $920, but your motion was $760 and $925.
I, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm just.
I should have been 20. I'm sorry, 20, I'm sorry.
I'm questioning, I.
Dawn, would you change that to 20? I was looking here at another, some of my figures. 920 is what I said originally.
I guess I can, I can support your motion as long as we have an understanding that at some point we can revisit this and maybe go more. But to do the immediate stuff now, if you're willing to agree to look at more of it.
Well, you know, I don't, I don't think there's any doubt that if they have other needs, that they come back before the board to ask it. I, my biggest concern is we're, we're putting out about 1.6 million today. We have a nursing home that is going to either have to do something. We have a courthouse that is, we're looking at needs repaired. And that ugly one out in, up front of us is that law enforcement center. You know, and we don't have enough money to do everything. Again, you are a taxing district, and I know you've tried. But the people of this county have got to wake up that the burden has to be, the people have to pay the taxes. I know that they claim the taxes are too high, that there are fewer people paying them, but that's really not true to county government because we're taxing the land, and the land doesn't change. There's the same amount of land we had 20 years ago as we do today. The valuations go up, and the mill levies go up, and that's why your taxes go up. The more demands on this county, we have no choice but to raise more money. And this county, unfortunately, cannot do it through sales tax like some of the large counties that are commercial counties. We just don't have it. One of the things that I bothers me the most about raising mill levies is it hurts the vehicle the worst here in this county. I mean, vehicle taxes are extremely high when you go to buy your tag. And I don't know how you can lower those, you know, unless we lower the mill levy. But if we lower the mill levy, then we have less money to work with. It's not been an easy decision for me. I don't like spending money. Maybe I, I like saving it better. But I think 10 years ago, this commission wisely put some money aside that we can meet these needs that are coming. Now, what we're going to do in the next 10 years to meet those needs, I don't know when we spend this money. But.
Well, you're correct on that, because I can tell you, I paid last month to pay the taxes on my wife's $22,000 car. The taxes on it were higher than your house section of grass, Howard. Can you believe that?
I would like to make a few comments, because I do have a few concerns. And just the primary one would be, has there been any discussion? If, if your proposal isn't 100% funded, which right now it's not quite, because you're looking at storm shelters as well? What, since we already talked about you not having the cash funds available to do something like that, what would be your next proposal? Because, and I'll just preface it with saying, in my mind, to protect the taxpayers, you know, I can justify spending $1.7 million that you're only making half a percent interest on, rather than trying to bond out $1.7 million for 4% or whatever it may end up being. So financially, I, from the stance of protecting everyone's tax bill, you know, you're basically asking for money upfront that then wouldn't be paid for over a long-term bond. But what would be the process then? If that is the total amount that you're able to get to do these immediate projects, do you foresee anything in the near future that's going to be a massive dollar amount? And/or if you continue with the plans for the shelters, what will be the route there? I mean, are we still looking at a bond on top of what we're doing, is basically what I'm getting at?
If they get the grant for the shelters.
If we get the FEMA.
That's the big deal.
We have, we will owe 200, our matching will be 200. I think I have that, $206,000 will be our matching, I have it in the presentation. That will be, we'll just kind of wait until we find out about the FEMA grant. We have exhausted all the grants that we know of for storm shelter in this area.
I'm sure that we're going to hear some grumbling about doing this, because it's actually a tax savings for the taxpayers. Because if this goes to bond, they're going to have to pay that money back with interest. This doesn't have to be paid back, so.
And in 299, a hundred bucks for the board, we're not, we're not looking for doing a bond. We just do a thing for grants and D medicine. I call band-aid measures what we have to do, I mean, we do what we have to do. But we're not looking to do a bond issue.
I just feel like it would be poor oversight on my part to spend money upfront and then not spending it on other things in the county where the taxpayers are going to end up paying for that long-term anyhow. And then also them to be asked to pay for additional projects for the schools. And I don't really, I mean, I think that the schools in the communities, for those who want the communities to stay in the smaller cities that we have, the two small cities that we have, and the few outlying that don't have any schools, unfortunately, aren't benefiting from this. But they are in the sense that their children are attending these schools. And I can see that it's, it's good for the communities to have, you know, the solid foundation there that they're not financially struggling.
I can answer the other part of the question that I can talk to the board tonight and bring that information back to you. But I don't know what their plan, their plan, if they don't get the FEMA grant. I don't know what they're thinking about. We have no protection out of the high school. We look to infrastructure, the locker rooms, and now it's going to be, upwards into, you know, we're talking 600, 700, 800,000 dollars. That's just not feasible. So I don't know. But I can, I can try. I just don't know.
And then my, my last issue is not necessarily of the schools at all, it's for the commission. I believe that if we're going to continue to spend this money, you know, we've allocated approximately half a million to the nursing home. We're looking at this a little over one and a half million to the schools. I feel that there has not been a comprehensive plan for this money. And we haven't talked about what portion of it should be used to, you know, go back into the physical proximity where this money is generated. where this money is generated and/or what other infrastructure projects could be funded with it. And I know there were a couple of concerns voiced about it reduces the amount of interest that we're able to spend on these smaller projects that we've been doing. Not that it has been a significant amount, but it has helped smaller community organizations receive some additional grant funding. So have you two given any thought to that or how can we proceed to discuss that within the context of making a large expenditure out of this fund?
I think from the very beginning, the objective was to have 5 million dollars sitting there to do things that came up emergency-wise. From that point on, that money was gonna be spent on different projects throughout the county. As far as planning, how would you plan for them to come in with the needs that they have? You know, I don't know how you can do a plan several years out when you don't even know what the needs are gonna be. You could, you could have some ideas on what you're gonna do with it, but then what do you, when something like this comes up?
Actually, I think it's been very well planned because we were looking at a 5 million dollar bond. Now we're talking about them having used some of their capital outlay.
I'm talking about planned into the future.
Yeah, well, they had, I mean, it's been a good year of planning. So a whole year of planning is, goes a long way when you're talking about saving that kind of money. I mean, I think you, in 298, you ended up finding much better deals for the same types of projects that you were looking at rather than that comprehensive package that was being presented, you asked out of California, I think. So I would still like to see the board discuss future plans. I mean, I think that when it comes to our, spending on our own expenses for the county, we have a long way to go to decide what exactly our infrastructure needs are. And I would like to see that be part of this consideration. I wanna support schools, but I also want to do my job and make sure that we're not gonna continue to tax at the rate that we have been without filling some of those gaps that we've created with our own, I'll call it a budget deficit because it's not, I mean, I shouldn't call it that because it's not, but it seems like that because we're always saying that we don't have enough money to do our roads and bridges. And we're talking about having 5 million sitting is what the word he used. That's, those are my main concerns.
Are there any other discussion? I'd like Chair, Clark to read the motion, please. Thank you.
There is no further discussion. All those, the favors, aye?
Aye.
Exactly. You hear from, you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
If you guys hear from, you come back.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks, Ken.
You're back. You're up, Kelly, I guess.
Well, I just wanted to follow up with you on a discussion from a couple of months ago. I sent an email last night, so I don't know if you maybe had read it or not, but if I remember right, regarding the courthouse steps, John Hancost with Houston Quarry was here and basically said, you need to go to an architecture firm or somebody to do an assessment of it. He, he would gladly do the work, I think, but he needs somebody else to do the drawings and kind of direct him exactly what the best method of moving forward with the work is. After, so after that discussion, I approached Trainer HL out of Topeka. I, I know them, so I felt like I could kind of ask him like, just to get an idea of what an assessment would cost because I haven't a clue. So I talked to him about the courthouse steps, both, both of them, and then also painting because it seemed like that, that was the discussion point as well. And so they sent the proposal that I forwarded to you in terms of what that, what an assessment would cost. And then they also included various steps throughout the project in terms of contract administration, construction and so forth. So I wanted you to have that. For the assessment, they, they put it at 10,000 dollars is what their assessment would be. And then if we wanted to kind of keep moving forward there and kind of eat stuff, they, they had another number with that. But I kind of felt like really the, the top need is just figuring out what our assessment is. Once we have that, then we'll be able to have an estimate for what the actual work is gonna cost because that is not in here. So once I got this, I also talked to Katrina Rengler, who's the grants manager with the Kansas State Historical Society to see, all right, so how does this fit into any grant programs and to try and figure out what's the best way to, to tap into as much grant money as we can. And with that, actually, to your guys' point, I have a copy of that proposal.
Yeah, I did it for her. Thank you.
Don, do you need a copy of the proposal? So then when I talked to Katrina, I guess I kind of looked at, there's, there's two ways to go about it. And one is if we wanna move sooner rather than later, we might forego a little bit of potential grant funding to get things moving faster. If we wanted to try and tap into as many grants as possible, then we need to do a slower method just because of the way the grant deadlines and everything are kind of phased out.
Once we start though, those other grants, the later ones would not be available to us. Is that what you're saying?
Well, there's two primary grants and the deadline for those is November 1st is kind of the brick and mortar grant program. We could roll the assessment into that, but the problem with, we, we can't, I feel like we really can't put a good application together for the fall until we know what the construction cost is gonna be. And so it's kind of like, we'll just be shooting a number out there and, and I feel like we won't be able to put a very good grant application together.
Okay, that's, that's the, that's what, we need the assessment in order to, for you to write the grant.
Right, that's what I feel. So that's why if, so if we wanted to move sooner rather than later and apply for a grant for the construction in the fall to meet this November deadline, then we need to get the assessment done now. And it's pretty quick because by the time you get somebody hired, get somebody on the job and everything, October, that we would need kind of that month just to probably put the application together. So we would forego a little bit of that, but we, at least we'd have the assessment done and we'd be able to apply for the brick and mortar construction grant in the fall. That would be, we wouldn't know whether we were awarded that until February 2019, so then probably spring and the rest of 2019 is when we could actually do the, the work if we get the grant.
Do we have drawings of the building?
I don't know if we have.
Because it says, it's part of their proposal for their service says that we have assumed that the county has drawings of the building that will be available. So that they're, we do, Dawn says yes. Does that include the, because we're only looking at the steps, does that include the structure of the steps? I mean, that would help with the painting square footage, but not necessarily with the scope of the steps.
I think there's, there's construction documents up though, but they're a hundred years old.
That may be, they're more accurate.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure of the detail on them.
And I'm just looking, I mean, construction documents, I think it says 22,000 if we were to have them do it. But I believe John said that for himself as a mason, he wouldn't need an architectural design for the rear steps because he felt like those were repair, they weren't reconstruction. But the front is what he was worried about. So I wonder if that would be a little bit of a cost savings for us if they're planning on.
Yeah, I kind of feel like the rest of this, the B through F, might be adjusted after we do the assessment. You know, if, if we find out that.
I think the assessment is separate really from the construction document.
Yeah. It could be that, you know, they look at things and it's not as bad as what we think it's gonna be and maybe this, some of these numbers could go down. It could be that it's worse. And so, you know, they might need to go up, but.
We can do the assessment without doing, without contacting, without doing the architecture.
We can do A by itself, right?
Yeah.
And when we get to the other parts, we could bid them out from this company, you think? Or will we have, if we go with the assessment with this company, we will be stuck with them?
I think if we pay for the assessment, it's ours.
Yeah, I think it depends on if we wanna look at that as just kind of a separate piece. And then once we get that assessment, I mean, if you bid out the.
I think they're just basically offering to continue with the process, which would be to prepare all the documents and submit for bidding.
Yeah.
I think the assessment is the first step.
Well, I do too. I think we, I think we need to know what's wrong before we start allocating money for construction and things.
The other option, I guess if, if we don't wanna necessarily feel like we need to move right now on it, then we can sort of back off a little bit. In March, there's a Historic Preservation Fund grant which helps with planning types of projects. So we could get a grant potentially to do the assessment. Then, once we have that, then next, the fall of 2019, we can grant, apply for the construction. So it's the, the Historic Preservation Fund that would, the grant that could help with the assessment, that pays for 60% of it. So I mean, it's not like we're necessarily saving a ton of money by waiting, but so it's kind of a matter of what's more important, speed or saving as much as, as we can.
I think we put it off for a long time.
I guess my, my feeling is that we've just awarded 1.6 million, 10,000. As I said, it looks a little small. It's money, but it's something that's been needed done for about five years. We have a lot of dragging our feet wondering how we were gonna fund it and what we needed. I guess I don't, if we, if we don't fund an assessment, how are we gonna know what we need, I guess is my question.
You're saying waiting to do the assessment because of the grant cycle, not just the, not just the project. You're saying actual assessment.
Right, right. So if we wanted to get grant funding to do the assessment, that grant isn't due until.
November, or no?
February or March. So we'd basically be putting off the whole project for a year. Because March would be the, the grant to apply for the assessment, then you'd have to wait until November of 2019 to apply to the construction, which means we won't be awarded or know whether we're awarded until February of 2020.
I mean, I think the deterioration is there, but can it seriously not last one more winter? I mean, it's obvious, but if we're going to be tearing it all apart anyhow, I mean, what's, what's one winter of expansion contraction for? I mean, how, how, what are the chances that we get 60% of this paid for?
I think we'd have some pretty good chances, especially, you know, if we're talking 10,000 dollars, that's not a huge grant request, basically, or 6,000. So I, I think we would have a pretty good shot. And I don't necessarily know if it's better to, to move faster or wait. I just felt like, this has kind of been on my desk for a little while and I've been meaning to kind of get this back to you and so kind of. I don't know if you guys need to think on it or with everything else that you're having discussed. And I didn't know too if you wanted to do an RFP to do the assessment, you know, this, to me, this was kind of to help us at least understand what.
Yeah, it's a good flat rate to go by.
Right.
It's probably gonna deteriorate more by March, but I don't know if it's gonna deteriorate or if it's gonna be a hazard. And they're gonna rebuild the whole thing anyhow. If it deteriorates a little bit, we're not gonna break this agreement, but so I think.
Can you go ahead and prepare what you'd like to prepare for this grant application for the assessment now, even though it's not due until this thing? I mean, maybe that would just get us ahead of the ball so that's already in motion. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I probably, I mean, since it's so long, I'd probably wait a little bit until it gets a little closer just in case anything changes or not. I also didn't know.
Do they have a time limit on their offer?
Probably, but, so I think if we waited, what we would do is we would apply for a grant for, let's say, saying the project costs us 10,000 dollars. If we're awarded, we could either talk to them and say, you know, that we got a grant for 10,000 dollars, so are you guys still good with that? Or I don't know if the state would want us to then bid it out, bid out the assessment. Sometimes they do require bids as part of their.
I think we should be doing that anyhow. I think for any construction, we legally have to for any construction project, whether it's grant, whether it's assisted with grant money or not. But I, I look at it like this, I would like to see us wait and try to get some of that grant money since it's available and this is the purpose. Because let's just say we have a local bid that's 6,000 higher than a bid out of Topeka. I'd rather go ahead and have us spend that money later on keeping that money circulating within our own borders. If we do have to choose a higher bid, I'd rather spend the money on that than the assessment. That's my, the way I'm viewing it.
That grant's due in March. I wonder how long before they decide.
May, I think is when.
So you still have time to get the construction documents and stuff completed to, to go for the November 1st grant.
Yeah, I think that would be the goal is to have everything, that assessment done.
I think with the assessment done, well, you're, when would it be awarded?
The March grant would be awarded in May, I think is towards the end of May.
July, August, and you'd have to apply by November?
November 1st.
September, October.
Yeah.
So it gives you about five months. That would probably be even enough time to bid out the, the rest of them.
It would, although it would be tight. I mean, by the time you end up just doing the contracts and stuff like that for, for bidding, you know, if you put it out there for a month and then you need a month just to put a contract in place, it seems like, you know, five months really isn't a lot of time, but I think there would be as long as, you know, everybody knew from the beginning the goal is to have something ready to go for that next one. And I didn't, also didn't know if the North Central Regional Planning Commission, at some, one point we talked about if they would help apply for grants, which they might be able to do. I kind of feel like if, I, I would just, Economic Development received a Historic Preservation Fund grant, so we were applied in March and were awarded in May. So I feel like I.
Fresh on it.
Good luck on, on that, my first shot, so I would be willing to help with that if the North Central Regional Planning Commission camps are, they charge for that or something.
Could you maybe contact them and ask them if they waited until March to try to get that grant, the assessment, if that would be, if it would be a reasonable thing to try to have all the construction documents and stuff done prior to the November grant letting?
You mean if five months is enough time?
Yeah, if that is even feasible.
And by ask them, ask Trainer or ask the state?
Yeah.
And if you would contact North Central Regional Planning Commission and ask about how much they're willing to do or at what point does it become fee-based?
Okay.
Because we do pay into their budget yearly, so I don't know, besides informative information, I don't know what we get for that. Don, do you have any input on that in the past, what North Central Regional Planning Commission has helped with basically free of charge for administering any grant type help or? But do we pay a fee?
I think they take, they're, it's included in the grant, I believe.
We used to never, but then, like, we had a, none of my degree for us for a while, so I did change their policies, but like the fire district, they charged.
They charged?
Yeah.
The fire district to do it, to help them?
I guess.
Sounds good.
If I can change the subject for one minute. Regarding last week's discussion with Doug Alman, can you guys meet, do a conference call with the GOV County Hospital CEO Thursday at, I think it was 10:00 AM? There, we had two options for next week. I think one was Tuesday at 9:00 and the other was Thursday at 10:00, I believe. There, we had two options for next week. I think one was Tuesday at 9:00, and the other was Thursday at 10:00, I believe. But since Tuesday's tomorrow, I'm thinking Thursday.
You mean this Thursday?
Yes, yeah.
And would we do that from our residence, or do you want it sent to courthouse, or?
Um, I can set up a conference call if you guys want to call in from room largest.
I would like to call in, just letting you know ahead of time, but...
Yeah, I, I would just sit and call in.
I could come in, probably.
Yes, Thursday at 10:00 is what you have. It was either tomorrow or...
I just come to your office.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. If you want to come to my office, you're welcome to.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Is that this Thursday?
This Thursday, yes.
Yes, the 5th.
All right.
Thursday, the 5th, 10:00 AM, we will be having a conference call with the administration of the GOV County Hospital slash Elder Care. Is it, it is a nursing home facility, long-term care. I don't know how you qualify that.
Yeah, it, um, Doug, after last week's meeting, it is a little different than our situation. It might be more independent living, which is maybe how they get away with it, but yeah.
Not so much skilled care.
Yeah.
Is Doug going to be involved in the phone call, or just the administration?
Uh, no, Doug will be involved as well.
And Steve Granzo?
I sent Steve an email last week, but I believe he was out of the office, so I have not been able to talk to him.
I'll be back.
Yeah, I think his, his email, automatic email sent over back Monday, so I can follow up.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Joe.
Hanging off? Move it, thanks.
I move to hold special meeting considering I want to say that management or Lincoln Park or?
What's that?
Combined management of hospital and long-term care with a phone conference on Thursday, July 5th at 10:00 AM.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a second. Is there any further discussion?
I guess technically, it's an open meeting, so would that be, the public is available to come to the courthouse and listen in on the audio conversation here, which maybe only one of us would be here physically, but, and it, I'm assuming Kelly's doing it through her office, her, her office line?
Obviously. It is a public, it will be a public meeting.
Right.
Repeat, which, which Kelly is this with?
Go.
GOV.
GOV.
GOV, oh, excuse me.
Yeah.
GOV.
Yeah. I want to talk my heard with Grant.
No.
That was me. I, that was my mistake. I said Grant, and I was wrong. I just, the G was stuck in there and...
Very similar, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
They have a whole different situation. There's an assisted living, which I think is probably going to be what makes a difference, but rather than a, a skilled care facility.
Does that mean they have a separate nursing home for skilled care that's not with the hospital?
I can answer that.
Oh, I'm sorry, we were voting. We haven't voted yet.
Oh, those are favors, ah, ah. Smith Center dead, I believe, twenty dead.
Is Smith Center Grant County?
No, Smith County, Grant County as she was.
You, okay. I don't know why I had that stuck in my head.
Is that the county that just?
Yes, yes, that's right.
Way out west.
Yeah, that's right.
Now, I think there was something, was there one in Cheyenne County, St. Francis?
I don't know.
There was, there was somehow a county involvement in that one, but I don't remember exactly what it was.
Um, while we're on the nursing home topic, I'm going to make a motion about this. Um, I, I move to reject the submitted bill from Lincoln Park Manor
One.
For cleaning the air conditioner.
Condensers.
Condensers, excuse me, the condenser foils. Due to the fact that their contract says they have their own maintenance. And I just did that for my own business, so I, I don't really think that we should make work for someone else's business. That's not part of my mission then.
Do I have a second? Motion, dog, for lack of a second. That needs to...
Yeah, is that their budget request, or what does that mean?
That's the second half table.
Some last year, okay.
Second half table.
Morning.
Good morning.
I really don't have much stuff for, show you the tablet, how we use that, um, if we would say that to the end.
Good.
Bob's got a couple things we're going to discuss though.
Good.
We want an evaluation on him and see if we can put him in charge on the bridge. Kind of make him over the other guy, so put more responsibility up there.
Can we review an evaluation and open session? Is it satisfactory? Is the evaluation satisfactory? So, all you're, you're just wanting to promote him to Bridge Crew?
Yeah, I see, very grazing up there. Form a deal and, I don't know about...
You, did you do the evaluation?
Ah.
Okay. I would move to enter into executive session for five minutes. Under employee, uh, non-elected personnel for consideration of promotion.
I'll have a second. All of the favors, aye.
Aye.
Who's in this section?
Oh, excuse me, uh, Commission and, um, Highway Department. I move to approve the promotion of, is he good by Jess or Jesse? Jess Tacco, Jesse Tacco. To Bridge Crew Foreman. With a rate increase of $1 per hour. I'm sorry?
Thank you, babe.
Um...
I would do.
Do you want to do the first of the month?
Well, we need, we do pay for it. We need to do pay for it. Either, either last week or...
No, would it be?
See, if you want to do it today, you can do it today, but just have to remember to split out the...
Okay, that's fine.
Well, what would be the middle, 15? Do you do?
I would just do July 1st and July 2nd.
Well, but if he hasn't, well, okay, well, today's the 2nd, so that's fine, effective today's date.
I have a motion on the floor, I have a second. I have a second. Is there any further discussion?
Can you read the motion for me, please?
Well, I suggested move to approve the promotion of Justice Tacco to Bridge Crew Foreman with a rate increase of $1 per hour until July 2nd, 18.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all of the favors, aye.
Aye.
And I guess the main thing I had, we've been holding chips up there, stockpile them, get ready for seal later on. And like I said, we've always been out working on some pipe, replacing the ends and putting some back together. It's separated and stuff like that here, trying to, trying to stay alpha route as much as we can, so that everybody quit running around with the harvest. And they pretty well, I need to go around check, but I think we've got most of our new signs lowered down. Hopefully, they're where everybody can get over. There's still some of them they tore up. We had lowered down already, so...
I guess, Bob, I think Jeremy told you that we had a truck go off the culvert, or off the end of the driveway, and we kind of messed your road up a little bit, trying to get it back on the road. I think he told you that Mr. Sutton probably needs to go with gradeage, nothing too bad. Also, we did put some more fill on the end of that driveway. It's just a plug, so, so we just, we put some extra dirt. Couldn't get the truck was too long to get out, well, he didn't get old far enough, probably. I made a few marks, I made a few marks with the tractor, trying to pull him out, and finally had to have a winch coming, and winch it back up on the roads.
Yeah, I know, he sits up in there, and I didn't quite catch all of it.
Yeah.
I know, he sits up there, he kind of messed the road up a little, and I had him go check on it today, so...
It wasn't anything too bad, but, but if you see extra dirt there, that's where it come from. We took it out of our field and filled it up a little bit.
Yeah, it's like most of them around there, everybody's gone semi down, it is what made for that.
Um, I had a question. Have, have we addressed the compilation of the, um, concerns coming into the department? Because, was it last year or at the beginning of the year? It was last year. We had approved the complaint form that I think you had gotten from Norm Bowers. And it was registering the date, the time, who called in, what the issue was, and then, you know, how it was to be addressed. And I did a request for the complaints to see where we are in that process, and it's my understanding that the department is not recording them. I've also had several people come to me and say that they've made continuous requests over the past few weeks, month, two months, um, with, with very little follow-up, until they physically come to the premises and find one of you. So, how are we, uh, recording these complaints then, if we're not using the, the sheet that we approved?
Who's continually been coming in or complaining, made that request to you?
Um, you want to answer my questions first?
All complaints get wrote down.
Where? Where? Because when I ask for them, they're not there.
You went through, it'll give you a whole list of all the complaints.
You made up that list?
I, the ones I had, Liz gave, had one. I think there was over 500 there last year.
Yeah, there was no date, there was no person who called in, and there was nothing to say whether it got done or not, or who was going to do it. So, but the sheet that we approved for the department to use had all of that information on there. So, my question is, I guess, why are we not using the sheet that was approved by the commission?
We're going to use it, or we're going to use this?
That's for, that's...
I don't think we need a both.
That is for the, the operators, for the employees of the department to input things. I'm talking about...
Well, Liz is going to go out and repair it at some point.
I'm talking about how we're recording who calls in, or who comes in, or who, who registers their concern with the department over any particular issue.
Isn't it going on now?
All of them are wrote down, that are called in.
Who's writing them down?
Well, if they call, if I'm not around here, Michael, Liz, got a notebook up there, she keeps every call that comes in, wrote down. Who, who called them, the date and the time and all that.
But Michael...
If I answer, I'll take them, write them down.
Yeah. Do you write them in the book that she keeps?
No, I go...
So, we have several different places that all these things are being stored?
Well...
Michael brought in that sheet?
She'll answer the phone and hand it to me, and she'll write it down, and then I'll make a note in my book, so I can keep track of it likewise.
Michael brought in a sheet to fill out, that he got from the engineer that works for the Kansas Association of Counties. Where did that go?
We used it for a while, and it just kind of became cumbersome, I guess.
Well, apparently, it wasn't used at all, because I never received one, and I asked for them.
We gave the, the rest of them 500 or so deals that we had wrote down, they got it.
Well, I think maybe what needs to be understood is that when a CORA request happens, which is open, everything in your department is open record. So, when someone makes a request, you have to give originals. You can't just make a new list that's compiled in your own handwriting or typed up by the secretary based on the information that you accumulate in several different areas. The CORA request is for the document itself, whatever the original document is. So, I'm going to redo my request, and I'd like to see the original documents, because if I get another piece of paper that is just someone's compiled information from multiple sources, I'm going to be concerned, and that's why I'm bringing it up now. I know you guys don't like when I sound concerned about things, but to anyone else that's listening, when we find out that we have several people writing things down, and it's all in different places, and nobody can find it when it's asked for, that's a poor reflection on us.
Maybe find it when it's asked for.
I didn't receive it.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't. I asked for...
What I wrote down, my personal note.
Yeah, that's...
And that's my stuff, you know, if you're...
No, actually, everything that you have that pertains to the county is in open record, just so we're clear on that. But when I ask for a CORA request in writing, it's legally that you receive the original documents. And I asked for the complaint forms that Michael brought to the commission for approval. And we approved them, and there aren't any, or at least I didn't receive any. So, they are either somewhere, or they're not being used, and that's my question, why they're, why they're not being used. I mean, it's, it's, you brought them, so why are...
And we used it for a while, and we kind of decided we didn't...
You kind of decided you wanted to go back to the situation that we're in now, which is where several different people are writing things down in different places.
Well, if they're not in, she's got to write it down, because they can't very well write it down when they're not there. So, you're always going to have it in separate places.
Where would you suggest I go to talk to about caller descent? Who, do I talk to most people? Is that what I'm supposed to do?
You call into the office and put in a request.
And if, I'll go again then.
Are you saying you've made a request prior?
I didn't write anything down on the form. I did not have a form to write on.
But you made a verbal request.
Verbally spoke, and get a map.
There you go. There's your answer.
You talked to who?
Lady in the office, uh, outside the shop here down the street.
Talked to her out on the street when she wasn't in the shop. Is that what you said?
In Michael's, uh, office. I talked to Michael about a couple spots, two, same ones. Now, my sons may have talked to you, Bob, about the same ones too. It's not anything real important. We figure, well, we can just tear it up like it is, or dump in some stuff where we want to, to get the trucks around, or whatever, but we reported it. One spot, there was a red flag that did show up.
Yeah.
The day, the day after, the day after I was in here.
The intersection up there.
Yeah, Ninetieth Road and Percher.
Percher, Greenway one.
Yeah. That was, that was marked, but that was all that ever happened.
Yeah, margin, and like I say, we don't always get every one of them just, we try to work when we're in a certain area and stuff.
I just understand that, but I didn't know if they're still, if they're still on record to be accounted for.
The question is, where is it written down, and who has it?
I said, in my book.
That's the only place that it exists.
You have Ninetieth, Ninetieth and Ry Road written down, show me. Ninetieth and Ry Road.
And while he's looking for that, Michael, on the, on bridge, I was thinking number 67. Are you, are you finished there?
No.
Okay.
We got the north side completed, and we're waiting for them to get done with harvest traffic.
Okay.
And then we're going to go in and complete the south side.
And did Tanner go out and take a look at that since the work has been done? Or how, how is he interacting with that process?
He's observed it.
He went before, and then he went after?
Yes.
Okay. Have you made any decisions about investing in any rock upstream to curtail some of that backwash, like the swirling that's happening, that is wider than the bridge area itself?
Yes, Tanner and I and Bob, we all went out and looked at that last, after last meeting when he was here. And we went back and did some aerial photography, history looking, and decided that, he says that there's no imminent issues, that it's not necessary that we got a lot of other issues that'd be a lot more important than that. As far as what could affect our rideaway is not really an issue at this time. You know, I guess what I don't understand is when you say upstream, you know, how far are you talking? He, he didn't seem to think that there would be a need for anything more than what we have, you know? Within our rideaway, it is armored with rock.
Okay. Now, this is only on my phone, and I have a cracked screen, but I will, I will get you some pictures compiled on my computer here. But this marshy side to the south, the water that accumulates and sits, and then when it's flowing, actually creates a stir, is wider there than the bridge foundation, and you can see it there. So, and that is to the west and above, where these, that little pile of rocks exist. So I'm saying, if you rocked in some of that bank side, you wouldn't have this washout that's happening. I mean, there are cattails growing there because it's so moist, and that seepage that's happening all the way around like this, behind the structure of the bridge, is a form of deterioration. And if we don't take care of it now, it just becomes more of an issue in the future. I would agree with Tanner by saying it's not an immediate, it's not an emergency situation, but why would we neglect it when we already have machinery there and manpower there? This is the other side, where that's the curve that comes from the west on the north, and it has widened. According to everyone who lives there, drives past there, I've driven past there for several years myself, it is continuing to widen. There are no rocks. There's a little pile on the, on the south. There are no rocks on this, you can see the deterioration in the bank side. I shouldn't say no rocks.
You're not looking, there's all kinds of rock in there.
The deterioration is visible right there with the, the actual silt building and moving, and then the cutouts. It's not a smooth bank line, so you can see that.
That's stuff they just put over there, working on the bridge, if you're calling silt, that's what they dug out.
No, those pictures are before you ever even got there. The bridge is closed when I took these pictures, several weeks ago, Bob.
Well, I guess, the engineer and Bob and I, our decision-
Here you can see we're cut out clear to the, the actual fence gate.
That's what I told you last week.
Tanner's opinion, Bob's opinion is not to do any additional armorment at that location at this time, but if the board would like us to, we will armor it while we are there.
I would think that if you had the manpower and the equipment already located there, that to order rock, which, does, does Quartzite provide large rock like that?
They have shot rockets.
Do we know what the pricing is on that?
I do not off the top of my head.
Well, here's a picture of what's there, okay? I'd say it's a pile about this big. You know, I mean, it's deeper than that, but I won't say it's about. And you can see just where that bank, there's like the marsh that it's creating, it's creating a marsh back behind-
It's vegetated, and it's not eating the vegetation away.
Yeah.
Cattails have been there for years.
It's been growing there for years and years.
So if we continue to neglect it for years, we'll just, someone else will pay for it later.
I think we pay an engineer to look at things like that, and if the engineer says it's not an imminent problem, it's not an imminent problem.
He said it's not an emergency, that doesn't mean you don't fix it right to begin with, so you don't have to go back at all.
But he said he looked back to old areas, and they hadn't come back in without a flip, 10, 15 years or better, so ate back in there.
While you're looking there for that spot, right there on that road, we provided gravel and put on it, and somehow our grader does not want to grade it. It's okay to skip it part of the time, but it looks like you ought to grade our gravel once or twice a year, rather than just doing the dirt road a half mile north of it. It's unbelievable, but I guess what we need to know is, is that our responsibility after we put gravel on there to do, to maintain the road. We have a grader, and we will take care of it, but we want permission to fix some of these, some of these entrances to the fields and do the road work. Can we do that?
No.
If we cannot do it, I think there's definitely a fault with the road department on not wanting to do it for us. Now, that's a problem.
Well, let's find this, let's find this complaint, or this issue.
You helped us last year, we had one spot, and they did put a, put a tube in, but yeah, the water's not running down this year, but we got that fixed. We did that right away. But at the same time, there are other areas that we reported that haven't been done. And so, how long do we wait before we're supposed to do it ourselves?
Like I say-
If I was you, I'd be a little careful what you do yourself. I can tell you that right now.
We made a nice road where we put the gravel, very nice.
Can, can we find and verify that we even have this on record? That, that's a good place to start, I think, to, to defend our department here.
I can go out of form again and start over, if that's what we need to do.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's my concern. You know, we don't have an organized filing system to which anyone has access at any time, which is how it's supposed to be, so that we can keep track of where we are with our projects. And if your project is not a priority, I understand them saying that. They're telling me that, you know, reinforcing the embankment of a bridge that has yet to deteriorate isn't a priority, which is fine, you know, if they're going to make those types of decisions, we judge them on that later. But if we can't even find the paperwork to begin with, this is where we need to start, with correcting that, which is what we did last year, by instituting a form that Michael brought in, that he got from the engineer upon his suggestion. I mean, I had talked to Norm Bowers, the engineer, prior to that, and asked him, how do you keep track of these things? And that was his suggestion, so we're still not doing that.
Please don't write on our road, though.
What?
I said, if he's working on our road, I want to know about it. I wouldn't push me if I was you, Howard. You go out there on that road and start doing work.
This was back when Larry Meiser was in charge of the region, and gave, gave permission to have the graders come to put our gravel over it.
No, I'm talking about if you're out there blading our roads.
So would you like to give instruction to the highway department to correct the issues he's talking about then?
I don't think they're purposely skipping his road, any more than they do any of the other ones.
Like I say-
I don't think he's suggesting that, he's saying-
Yes, he is, that's what he just did. He just suggested that.
He's saying that he has noticed that at times they've not done that gravel portion, and they've done the dirt portion. Isn't that what you just said?
That's correct.
North, I think he said, the dirt, the dirt road to the north.
So which road is it?
Ninetieth.
Keep gravel there, and the railroad tracks, see there?
Yeah, we need some more gravel on the railroad track, too, if you wanted to fix it like, otherwise you just cover the railroad track up. We haven't done that yet, we dumped a little bit there, we will put some more there, because the gravel sticks up too high. Who's supposed to take care of that? Railroad?
In theory, yes. In theory, yes. The rideaway is their responsibility, but they never do anything, so we tried to do the best we can.
Yeah, you done, done good on down towards Peterson's there, that's as smooth as it's ever been for the track to cover it up. I commend you for that.
Dealing with railroad is a sensitive situation, as you're aware, that, you know, over the years, blading across tracks, we have derailed a few trains in this county. And it's not that we do it on purpose, but it does happen. And it's, it's, it's very hard in rural America to maintain these tracks with the railroad. They have no funds to deal with it either, you know, so we-
And there are so many crossings.
There is, it's tedious, and it's challenging for the operators, I will say that. We can take a look at it, see what we can do to help the situation, but I'm not guaranteeing that we can make it as perfect as what the other locations may be.
With that one crossing, there's cement, two meters tiles already fallen. They just need another section on each side of it, a little more dirt, a little more gravel.
Across the road or across the river?
Well, that just, on down Ninetieth and, Ninetieth and Ry is what I'm looking for.
There are-
And that's just up the road from that. Less than quarter of a mile apart where they started with it. Now, you have to look and see. I'd just like you to have, I think it'd be to your advantage, to the county's advantage, you might have 500 forms or whatever, but you need people that are not satisfied of what needs to be done, needs to be recorded in some way, instead of just verbal over the phone for the three different locations. It's got to be organized better. Maybe never get done, but you need to have it organized better.
You can bring it in and write it. You can bring it in and write it, other people do.
Terry, the conversation is that we've had this discussion, we already instituted a form, so it's not there. That's-
I didn't say a form, I said he can write it down and bring it in.
Mary Powell wrote hers down, and I haven't heard Hyde nor Hair from the highway department, and she wrote it two months ago, and she wrote two letters. So do you have that written down?
I have the letter.
You have the le, so you have the letter filed somewhere, but it's not, but you didn't write down that area in your book?
They prioritize them.
So how, where do you go, where do you go to look for what area you're in? I would say if you're up near Mary Powell's, then you're up near where he's talking about that you have written down. So do you have one piece of paper that, like even a map that says these are the, X marks the spot for where we've received these letters or complaints?
Based on what the complaint, the stuff is, how serious and what it is.
So, Michael, you're the head of this department, what is your suggestion about this situation? I think you're seeing this unfold in front of us, that we don't have an organized system here. How are you going, how are you going to fix that? Because it's your responsibility.
There's a difference between your perception of organization and ours, because we're not doing it the way you want it done, you foresee it as not being done properly. We have found, and Bob, I believe, does a pretty good job of it, of keeping the stuff in his books.
Do you have a note about Ninetieth and Ry? Where is it? Where, where is that? Because he can't find it. So do you have it? Who has it?
Not with me, I'm sure I put it down on a piece of paper and gave it to Bob.
And sometimes that's, that'd be one reason I can't find it in here.
You know, most of the times when I get something, I will pull up an aerial map, I will write a description on it, and I will flag it, and I will pass it on to Bob.
Flag it on this program?
No, an aerial map, printed aerial map.
So you don't use the mobile 311 program to flag these complaints as they come in?
No.
So, the report that you gave us has about three to, three to five people in the department using this as a flag, but you use an aerial map separately as a flag, you use your book, Liz has papers that she keeps when she's on the phone, then you get something and put it on paper, then hand it to him on an individual piece of paper. I mean, here we are in the same conversation again, and you're telling me that it's my perception? I don't think that sounds right.
Just because you think something ought to be done a certain way, doesn't mean it works.
The whole reason why, Terry, the whole reason why Michael O'Hare brought in the mobile 311 program-
And it was a poor, it does not work the way we were hoping it would work.
You just said you're not even using it.
If it's not working, I guess you don't do it.
Have you ever used it? Your name's not in here.
Yes, I have used it.
Where, where, what, where is what you've logged?
Probably completed. There's a lot of jobs in there that we have not went in and put completed, and you don't see the completed on that report.
I don't see your name in here anywhere. I, I see absolutely nothing submitted by you. You just said, two minutes ago, that you don't use this, that you print out your own aerial map.
Started out I did.
So if you're so dissatisfied with the program, why have you not come to the commission and said that we're, we have contracted for this program, and it doesn't do X, Y, and Z, and that we should be talking to the company about that? Because you brought this program in, even though you've told everyone that it was me somehow, you brought this program in to us, right? Or, or did I? Did you or I? I don't remember.
I can't recall either.
You don't know?
It's been quite a while ago, but I'm pretty sure I brought it in.
That's right. And if we've looked up in the minutes, you presented it to us, and we signed a contract for the internet before we even started using it, and you said you needed a few months to figure it out, and it's been about a year. Now you're saying, all of a sudden, a year later, that it's not, you, you aren't using it, it's not working.
I don't think this is the first time it's been mentioned in a meeting that we didn't much care for it, and that people have not been using it.
People have been using it, I see tens of, tens of inputs here.
And how far backward are they?
There aren't any dates, Bob, I wish I could tell you. There are no dates on this paperwork.
Like I say, I don't think hardly anybody's using it like they did at start, where everybody jumped out there and started, and then it just died down. Nobody's using it anymore.
They're not using it anymore, we need to do it later.
Once in a while, it's not somebody, but I haven't seen anything really lately.
Well, if we can't even find what you just told us you had in your book, how can we make this work? This seems very advanced, if we can't even, if we can't even keep track-
If it is, if it's something Michael gave him, it probably wouldn't be-
No, he asked him where it was, and he said it was right in his book.
I thought I had it in my book, but like I say, I get some of these papers, and I'll get some of them on my desk, and so often I'll go back through them and transfer them over to my book, so it may not got transferred over here. And I'm, no, because I set the flags up there he's talking about, I had the flag that I set to him.
Okay, so Michael, you brought in this program that now you don't like. It's your responsibility to create some cohesion here, so what is your next suggestion?
Is that a yearly contract, or what is it?
I believe it's a two-year contract on tablets and yearly on the 311 program.
I had told you that I talked to mobile 311, and they said they offer training. You have yet to bring them in so that you can educate everyone on the program that we're paying for, so what is the reason there?
Kind of the generation gap in the technology.
Well, that would be the purpose of the training.
You guys have anything on- You guys have anything else?
Do you have anything for us, Don?
No, I think we can go, we can go have you. It's not even 10 o'clock. Would you like to show us the tablet that you brought in and show us why it's not working?
This is the screen the operator sees. You touch what you want to do. If you want to work on right of way, touch right of way. If it can't be the road or ditch, click on one of the other. If you want gravel, you'll touch the gravel. Pulls up screen there. If you're at the location, hit the geo button. If you're setting your dash, you type in the address.
If you hit the geo button, it marks it on the map according to where your internet locates you?
It automatically brings in the address. Either way, it's going to put a mark on the map of that address. Brings up 247 East Stone. And you manually put in your description of what you would like to do, what needs to be done. You choose to attach a photo, you can attach a photo to it. Takes a little bit more time to do that. If you use the photo program within the 311, you get a very grainy photo that's so pixelated it's not even worth looking at. So you have to exit out of here, take the picture on the actual camera program that's on the tablet and then you import that picture to attach to this. It's a little bit more work, but there's a couple of guys that have caught on to it, know how to do it. Everybody else have been told how to do it, but just choose not to.
But you can take the pictures first on the tablet, then open your records.
Vice versa. All you got to do is tap it back and you switch in between them.
And it uploads it directly from the tablet into the program?
Yeah.
So you type in like, look, you need gravel?
Description.
You know, where you end up.
Yeah, I have one here, for example. On East Deer, it says culvert on corner is plugged, needs to be cleaned out, possible new one installed, will need backhoe, motor grader, etcetera. You can see why what?
Pencil and paper for me would be easier.
To write it down than type it?
Yes.
You don't know how to type?
Not on a, that kind of a typewriter. I can use a keyboard, but I can't use a, I'm not very good at texting people in case you want to text me. Be careful what I write back. It may not be nice because I may hit the wrong button.
So you're saying the picture program within 311 is granulated. What, what else is wrong with it that you said it's not working?
We want most of the employees to enter the data. Correctly enter the data. And it gets very time consuming as far as trying to log it and track it, you know? If, if they put it in there, sometimes there's been a few employees that it went out because they, I'm guessing maybe they didn't want to do something else. And just spend an hour or two snapping pictures of, say, roadside that needed some new bolts put in. Why would you do that instead of just getting, putting some bolts in? You know, and it created a lot of work there where they felt if they put it in the tablet, somebody else would come do the work for them. You know, and I, I don't know how they got that perception.
They can bet your signs that need a bolt put in them instead of sticking a bolt in it.
This post had broke off, I think, but I'm not sure whether the sign's on it or not. You know, that was just looking out the window, stuff like that. Nobody really got out and checked and, oh, I'll be put a post and a sign back here. They wrote it on here and sent it in expecting somebody else to come do it for them.
Are we talking about putting a bolt in a sign that lost one? Or are we talking about replacing a sign you said broken off?
Both, like I say.
Okay, well, a couple of weeks ago, you told me that if anyone needs a sign, they have to come through you. If anyone in the whole county needs a sign, they have to come through you. So why wouldn't they expect to put it in and hear back from the person who they have to go?
The sign is there.
The sign is right there. They don't know. They just looked out the window and they don't know whether it needs a new sign or a new post. They didn't even check.
So which one of you have explained to the employees what their job is?
That's in their job description. It's been explained to them. And we just wrote up new job descriptions, passed them out here a couple of months ago or whatever. So it's in that job description. That's what they're supposed to do.
In all the records I have here, I don't really have anything about signs. Most of them are referring to gravel and branches that need trimmed, ditches that need done. And you actually told me that as well, that any ditch that needs pulled, they have to go through you. So why wouldn't they put it in the system and get a response back from you? Well, how would that, how's that creating more work? You told me that's the protocol, that they go through you, any ditch that needs, any 811 call or anything like that. Trees, you organize all the tree trimming, all the ditch cleaning. That seems appropriate to me. If I was on my route and I said, oh, those trees need trimmed and that ditch needs pulled, plug it in and I'd hear back from you, right? Because you're overseeing all of that.
Well, they let me know, yeah, I'll do that. But some of that is their responsibility. They shouldn't have to call them. They're just going to trim a tree. I shouldn't have to go out there and tell them, okay, trim this tree, trim this tree. They're supposed to have a responsibility according to their job description. The limbs slap on their grader windshield. They ain't got enough time to stop, get out, saw it off, cut it off. Go get a pick-up and come back with a saw and clean it up on a rainy day or something. I have to tell them to do everything. Their job description said they're supposed to be responsible for that kind of stuff. I don't believe, I seen a sign down. I stopped and I got out and put it up because it's a safety concern if that sign's down. Somebody has a wreck or something.
So if, if you guys are really concerned about what these people are doing while they're out on the job, maybe it's time to give them your expectations. It sounds to me like you're expecting them to just read their job description and then know whether they're supposed to call you and get permission or not. I mean, some weeks you tell me that, that they have to get permission to do anything. I mean, you just told me that you're going to hire a bridge crew foreman who's not allowed to make any purchases. So given that mindset.
All right, all right. You guys, go do your jobs. That's enough of this crap.
Why is it crap?
She'll sit here and badger on you all damn day if you sit here and let her.
You have enough talent to keep trading down instead of.
So we're just going to continue to ignore the fact that we have.
Run their damn department. You don't run it. You want to run every damn department in the county, then quit whatever you're doing, come to work here full-time and run the department. Otherwise, if we're going to hire these guys to run it, let them run the damn thing. We'll adjourn until Don.
Don needed to say something, your honor.
I have not received an official resignation yet, but everyone will be leaving me. I really believe you guys need a full-time administrator. Just going to say it. And if not, then you need a full-time human resource officer. And I would propose that you, if you don't think that you want to go with the administrator route, then you go with a full-time human resource officer and you can get out of the county clerk's office. I believe that they can have more than enough work as a full-time job. There are probably things that could be one dog now that is not because the time constraints in our office is more than what she originally budgeted for to begin with. Because I have them as being a half-time and a half-time and she's barely learning, beginning to work on our stuff, which is falling behind, which causes me to work evenings and weekends. And quite frankly, I'm a little tired of it.
What are her responsibilities as clerk assistant rather than HR?
We do elections. Currently, we're doing payroll because payroll was a formerly clerk's thing. I would suggest that payroll come out. We're still tying in with ambulance at some point in time. I really think that you guys need a full-time ambulance director and that the ambulance stuff go down. Now, mind you, we pulled the billing out, but we still have prior billing. We still have accounting work that we have to do.
What accounting are you doing for the, for the ambulance department if they're?
When they're collecting their money, all of the, all of the statements are coming. The only thing that we lost is the billing aspect of it.
Sending out the bills, not the receivables.
Yes, the actual submitting the bills to the insurance company. We will receive the money. We will credit the accounts. The auditor is telling me that I need to have all of their accounts on QuickBooks to be double-checked for the firm that is working, that we still need to track all of the ambulance runs and the income coming in. And then after their pre-collection efforts, it comes back to us to collect and to turn to set off. So there's, there's still an aspect. I would say probably half of the ambulance time has been taken out of our office, which was somewhere around 22 hours a month, although that really wasn't sufficient enough time to get billing done because we're behind on billing. I can make a list of everything that my office does, but quite frankly, we do a lot and.
But what about just a list of what you would like to transfer to the HR?
Okay, we can do that.
You know, that way we could have a better, clearer picture. If we're going to be hiring someone, I think we need to have those expectations ahead of hiring, not just throw things on them after they're hired. So I would still like to see a list of just everything that HR should be doing, payroll, et cetera, employee information, and whatever from the clerk's office can be transferred to that position.
I would suggest that this position be removed from the county clerk's office. Number one, I feel like sometimes the department heads feel like when they have to come in. So my suggestion is, is if you guys aren't going to use the commissioner's room anymore, that we will clean the election equipment out of that storage closet, filing system can go into that storage closet or foyer or whatever you want. Coat closet is what they formerly called it. And then the office be set up there to have their own. And then I feel like the department heads will maybe come and actually utilize HR person a little bit more often, but when they have to come into our office and, and speed or remove, that kind of takes out. But that would be my suggestion that it could.
Could it be HR slash administrator type some duties? I guess I, I'm a little unclear what type of administration duties that you perceive that we need.
An administrator in most counties normally take over the budget. They also act as the liaison between the department heads and the commissioners. So if you had an issue with a department head, you would talk to the administrator. The administrator would work that out. They normally are in charge of the HR department or they are responsible for all HR actions, including insurance. You know, you guys are wanting to broker out or consider different health insurance, that is beyond the scope of our capabilities. I don't think that people realize the amount of information that they ask for. They will want to know every employee, every dependent on the plan, what their date of births are, what kind of usage they use. It's huge, the amount of effort. So it would be best for us to go out to a broker. We'd have to advertise and figure out how to reach out for a broker. And then the amount of work just for that aspect is probably going to take months in order to do. It's not a one-time deal. I know we need to work on the handbook. You know, you're administrator. I don't know if you could get an administrator that does everything, but you probably could.
Well, it almost looks like we not only have administrator, but you're going to have to have a clerical staff to do some of the nuts and bolts or the, and then we're talking money.
But I think we're talking about two different things. If, if you define a full-time position for HR, that's one thing. If you're talking about an administrator that acts as a liaison, et cetera, et cetera, first of all, they have no business having all that HR information on every single employee. It creates a bias. And second of all, that's just one more step removal from the public if the department heads don't have to show up to a public meeting. I mean, we are elected by the people and their job is to oversee that we are managing our department heads. You put one more step of bureaucracy in the way of that and it's just a convoluted buddy system, as you guys have been called the, what is it, the good old voice?
You called us that, so.
No, that was actually given to me here by many people that live here. Oh, I'll show it to you, Terry, if you want to see it.
Now's just the time to consider changes.
Right, and I'm not, I understand what you're saying about the HR separating from clerk's office. I understand all of that. I'm saying if you're trying to combine that with an administrator for the whole county, I don't see that working. Especially when you're describing how much of a workload just the HR part is going to be. And there'd be a conflict of interest there, having all that personal information about every employee and then trying to be the administrator on a supervisory level in between who they're reporting to and who hires them. I think that's a convoluted situation that we don't want to create right now.
Most, most administrators aren't at the top of the HR departments.
Yeah, that's, that's scary. I mean, I certainly wouldn't want the person who reports to my boss knowing everything about me personally. I mean, that, that creates a situation that's not professional. It becomes personal at that point. I don't agree with that as a philosophy, period, but.
Well, in most counties, the guy's administrator, they're over every department. Regardless of whether it's HR or whatever, under that.
But they're not necessarily doing the HR work, which includes gathering.
I don't think, I don't think one person, like I was going to say, they'd have to have a clerical staff if I'm going to do that. One person not going to do all the administration and the HR.
Well, it's our job to do the administration. I mean, that's what the panel is for. If anything, instead of an administrator, what we need is a five-commission board. I mean, that would be more efficient than an administrator. A five-person commission would be much more efficient. You could have committees of two people. You could, you know, have additional meetings where you're actually bringing information to the board and we're not sitting here waiting for information to come to us.
That way we could each represent, what, 600 people instead of 1,000?
Well, you could split up all the city votes.
I think there's a limit to it. I mean, you know, once you go to 11, and then we could all have 200 people.
You can't. You have, you can have three, five, or seven, Terry. According to the state. But I, yes, if you would please bring us the list of what you think their duties would entail, that way when we advertise, we know what we're looking for.
I really think we would make it a full-time position and it would be beneficial to the county, honestly. It's just how I would feel. And also see if the department heads coming in.
Hannah is full-time hourly, not salary. But Deborah is full-time salary. But she's, her hours are split between what she's doing. But some of what she's doing, you're saying for the clerk's office, is actually part of the HR role.
Well, let's just be honest with you.
Because payroll.
She's not hardly doing anything for the clerk's office because most of it is, is what I would consider would be turned over to HR. You know, in, before we had HR, we were responsible for payroll, accounts payable, the budget, setting the levies. I tend to do most of the real estate. We have to change real estate transactions. And so we had a full-time person doing accounts payable and a full-time doing accounts payable or payroll. Since then, we've got the ambulance dumped on us. We've had landfill dumped on us. You know, they bill out, but those girls are spending more time on those services than what we're actually billing them for. But they just don't worry about the five minutes here, the 10 minutes here, the 20 minutes here.
Can I ask you something? The landfill, when there was a landfill personnel and then, as my understanding, there was one other person under landfill. It wasn't just landfill and notches weed out there like it is now, correct? There was someone.
They used to have a full-time secretary that worked between landfill and notches.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. That, that came to the clerk's office, is what you're saying?
Billing came to the clerk's office.
Is the treasurer by statute not able to do any billing or receivables in that sense?
I believe has ever asked them to do it. It always is asked of us. And quite frankly, I always feel like I can't say no.
Consideration there. I mean, or is it, it's two full-time staff in there, correct? Under the treasurer. Under the treasurer, two full-time? And do they do any billing or accounts receivable for any other department?
Not by any word.
Only for their own expenses, which are pretty minimal in quantity? I mean, not numerics, but in...
They do the motor vehicle for the state of Kansas.
Right.
Traffic license for the state of Kansas and then tax collision for a week.
Right.
I'm sure there's more things that they do that I'm just not aware of. Sometimes I think, why did I run for this job? Maybe I should be running for that job.
Grass is always greener on the other side of the fence.
I know.
Until you taste it and it's sour.
I thought I was, um, well aware of what I was getting into until, you know, you actually do it and you realize how much work it is.
When is the last time the ambulance director was doing all their own paperwork?
Since prior to Wendy Brintow.
Is that two ago?
Two, two full-time directors.
Susan, wasn't Susan, was her name? So Brett, Susan, Wendy, those three have not. Have they, have any, have they all been part-time, those three?
Uh, the two were full-time.
The two women were full-time and they still weren't doing the paperwork? Why is that?
They were not doing the billing.
That's what I'm calling, I'm saying, why should anything come through your office?
When we went to, when we went to a full-time director originally, they were responsible for the billing. And then there was a nightmare with that and she wasn't actually doing the billing. So it got brought back up to us. Originally, we did the billing until they, when they had a part-time voluntary ambulance service, the clerk's office had always done the billing. When we hired full-time, that was the one thing that they would always take over. Yeah. We have, have attempted prior to that of having the attendants come up and learn how to do the billing process so that they could do the billing process. And, um, let's just say that was a night. They just sat there the entire time and you try to show them how to do things and they're like, I don't understand why we're doing this, why we need to do this. And so it was very frustrating. To be, to do the billing, you really have to have consistency. And we've established that we don't have the education that we need in order to do it. So you've done the billing process out, but you still have the accounts receivable process. And, and yes, they are keeping track and they are sending invoices, but they will send three invoices. And then when that is done, then it comes back to us to collect.
When we hired this, Delise's, have, we passed off everything that was, what did she say? Six months or a year she could do prior?
They, she started whenever the contract was and then they were going to go back to January. And I think they're going to go, go back into, um, twenty-seventeen for me to help me.
Okay.
Once we establish where we are at for billing process, so.
Has that been one month or two months?
That they've been starting.
That's a two month, yeah.
I want to, gosh, I want to say it was the end of April, wasn't it?
I think, yeah, two, that would be two. So have you happened to see any numbers just to verify what the efficiency is there?
I've received some reports and they just, the transition in the billing cycle and then we have, um, the transition with Medicare to get reeval- reevaluated. So once we get going with that, then we should start billing. But we have received some income. Hopefully. And I'll, they have been sending me reports. I've kind of looked at them. I just haven't really paid it along. I need to busy myself.
So the ambulance is its own fund and basically whoever does accounts receivable only needs that fund to do the accounting, right? There's no crossover between general or anything like that?
So basically, like, when we are doing their billing or receiving their accounts receivable or answering any questions, we should be earmarking our time and billing them. To be honest with you, I think the girls' rule of thumb is if they haven't worked on it for half an hour or more, they just don't. But we spend an awful lot. I mean, Hannah bills out seven to eight hours a to, a month on refuse. There is a heck of a lot more that is being done than that. But I can't just sit there and say, you will fill out every month. It just, it's kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul anyways. I will come up with a list. You guys will need to decide. If you could decide by next Monday whether or not you want to go with a full-time. I will try to get you emailed out information so that you can have some time to think about it. And, but that would be my, my suggestion. Partly because I, I feel like there are needs for human resources not to be in an office where there's three people present. I think employees would feel more comfortable coming to talk to people if they knew they didn't have to come to the office to ask to talk to the person. So it's my personal opinion.
Does that mean you will be seeking a part-time person to replace the part-time hours?
I believe I still need a part-time person. I mean, is it, is it, um, I don't know what the word for it is, but is it unkosher for me to ask to not have to work weekends and evenings just to get my job done? Or are the responsibilities of my office done?
Well, when they when the job continues to grow, as it seems apparently has, it's time to to hire workers to do the job. No, I do not think you need to be working nights and weekends or the pay work is paying.
I mean, I don't know. I don't know where the skew occurred between all of the offices and how, how it happened. But, and maybe that's my own fault because we've said yes. I mean, we said yes to refuse billing. We probably should have never said yes. We should have probably made you hire somebody that could do office work and operate the landfill. We probably should have said no to the ambulance billing and made you hire somebody that could do both. We're trying to be a team player, but we just
Well, we're trying to keep the cost down as low as we can. That's what we're trying to do. We've been doing that ever since I've been here. We've been trying to not hire more people. I mean, you know, because that's where the expense is.
But it comes down to responsibility. You know, I'm being ridiculed for wanting to see responsible management of the highway department, which is our biggest portion of the budget. Yet here we are talking about other departments that don't even take care of their own internal paperwork and we're throwing it off on, it seems like, the switchboard of the entire county is, you know, pretty much how your office is operating. And I understand that is frustrating. You don't have time to thoroughly do what you need to do if you're doing it for other people as well. And that comes full circle to the conversations we've had about a full-time director at the ambulance and, and what that means. I mean, from my calculations, the last few months, on four to five shifts for what we're paying the director to be a twenty-four-hour station, we're paying less than that for one of our EMTs to be there seven or eight shifts. So, you know, financially, you're talking about not hiring more people. We need to look at where the money's going and how it's being spent and who's responsible for what. If we don't have that clarification, we can't, we can't administer the money properly. But I think we can start with a list of what you would like for HR. And we can look at that list and say, yes, this constitutes full-time or we could start part-time and see who's capable. I mean, there are people out there that have good clerical skills, like yourself, and don't need a lot of, uh, prodding to get their job done.
I will email this out to you guys and then we'll come back and visit Monday and then hopefully figure out what we can do to advertise. Thank you.
Did Deborah give you a timeframe?
I'm still at August seventh, so.
So we'll need to do that next week, decide on putting an ad in and what the ad's going to say.
And I, I mean, I'm okay with I'm not afraid for it. Hopefully I demonstrate that.
You're not afraid of work, Don.
I move to hold a public meeting prior to the budget to receive public input on our decisions for expenses for two thousand nineteen, hosted by the commission. Special public meeting.
I'm sure we'll have several public meetings. Every time we're in here, it's a public meeting. Motion died for the last of the second. We'll adjourn until eight o'clock on the night.
Are you asking me if I found that lawsuit?
Yeah, Michael knows. I talked to him and he, he wrote it on a map or something too.